Well, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, November 7, 2019, meeting of the Planning Board. Our first order of business is to review and approve minutes. There were some minutes that were in the package today. Does anybody have any questions or comments relative to the minutes?
No, sir.
No.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
We have to be a little more descriptive, Mal, because it does have a date on this. I'll put it out this way, make it easier for you.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the Thursday, August 1, 2019, meeting of the Planning Board?
Again, move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have some bills. Actually, I have two bills here. One is for $204 for Gate House New England, which is a legal ad, and I have another one for $2,200 for MDM Transportation Consultants. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the expenditures as read by the clerk, by the chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tim, you can approve in the next round.
Well, that was going around. Do we have any board member comments, Mr. Gordon?
No, I want to wish you all a happy Christmas season. I won't see you again until next year.
Well, we have, well, no, we'll be here before Christmas, but that's okay.
Oh, will we?
Yeah, Thanksgiving is the next big holiday.
Oh, all right.
Tim, do you have?
No comments.
No, sir, no comments.
Okay, I have no comments either. Okay, our first public meeting is a new public meeting for the Shrewsbury Nursing and Rehabilitation Center, request for de minimis change, location 40 Julio Drive. Do you have a legal notice?
I do not have a legal notice. We don't have a legal notice for de minimis change.
Oh, de minimis change, I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, Kevin Quinn, Quinn and Jerry, I'm here on behalf of Shrewsbury Nursing and Rehab Center Incorporated. We've submitted an application for, to amend an existing site plan approval that the board has. We're suggesting that it might be, the board might be willing to consider de minimis change. The existing plan, we have three streetlights on the existing approved plan. This plan proposes to reduce that to two lights in the parking area. We submitted the board a photometric plan to show you that the lighting is sufficient with the two lights. It's a more energy-efficient design and probably more cost-effective, I would say, as well, on behalf of my client.
Okay.
Can I answer questions?
Didn't, didn't we see this once before, Kevin?
Yeah, twice. This is at least the second time, yeah. That's right.
Did we approve it?
Yes.
Okay. This is actually a reduction in the number of lights.
Okay.
On the property. My only question is, I know the photometric plan and all, it's, it's just about relative safety.
Yeah.
So we're certain at the, I mean, it's a rehabilitation center, right? So we want to ensure that.
This lighting is sufficient. Well, it was done by the electrical engineer. It's not really our expertise, but the photometric plan shows you two things. One, in the parking area, the lighting intensity is good, but it also shows you that at the perimeter, we get below a tenth of a foot candle. It's actually zero foot candles at the perimeter, because glare is as much an issue for most folks as, as the lighting intensity. But it is, like I say, there's a lot of changes going about, about now with lighting, as I understand it, and this is a more energy-efficient design.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other?
I'm fine.
No, sir.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Move to close the hearing.
And so we can discuss, do, does anybody have any objections to this being considered a de minimis change?
No.
No, I feel it's de minimis.
I know as well.
I think that's what it is.
Okay, so can I have a motion?
I move that we approve the Shrewsbury Nursing and Rehabilitation Center request for de minimis change at 40 Julio Drive.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Kevin, have a nice day.
Next hearing is a continued public hearing for 360 Hartford Turnpike, site plan approval, location 360 Hartford Turnpike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. John Brenier, J. M. Brenier Associates, here with Steve Venakasa, who is the applicant and owner for this project. The last thing that we were waiting for to provide to the board was that some notification from DEP that they were going to finalize and give us an amended order of conditions for the same plan that is before you. We actually received that electronically. Steve got a call from DEP a couple of days ago. They said they were going to be sending it electronically and putting a hard copy in the mail. I just received it electronically today. So we do have the official amended order. Once Steve gets that in the mail, obviously, he'll be recording that at the registry. The other final modifications, we had a site walk with the planning department, Mr. Cahill and the, and the engineering department. We did add some additional screening from what was on the original plan. We have a row of evergreens to the residential property that is located at the back of the property, and there's residential house number 37, Clue Street. They, they do have some trees within their yard, but we are on the edge of, there's a sewer easement that runs along the property line at the edge of the easement and right along where there's a white vinyl fence, we're adding three more trees in that area just to kind of break it up a little bit, because there is a proposed building located adjacent to them. That was really, was there anything else Bernie that you, that we?
It was, most of it was, I think, detail-oriented, so I think, did you put a fence in as well? I can't remember. I know you put some deciduous trees that I asked for on the, right there along that side.
We showed the existing fence.
The other, the other property, though.
And there's an existing, there's an existing six-foot-high wood picket fence.
Right.
So we're going to be adding evergreens on our side of that existing six-foot fence.
Right. And I think it was a detail about a light somewhere. I think we added a detail, you added a detail. We changed the, what do we call it, display to showroom, because we didn't actually have, we don't have that in our definition, so showroom we have in our definition, so we changed it to that accessory garage, to make sure that's clear.
Yes.
And I put a condition so that the DEP superseding order of conditions that reference will be on the final set of plans, rather than the conditions, so the cover sheet will have the reference and the book, book and page number and so forth, the date of when that was given by DEP, so.
It'll have the same DEP file number.
Yeah.
But we'll give the updated book and page number, once we see the hard copy recorded.
On the final plans? On the final?
It would be, yeah, so after this meeting, before they come in for their pre-construction meeting, applicant supplies with the final plans with any amendments, based on the order of, based on, sorry, our conditions and the decision, your conditions and the decision, or any final comments from the board. So when those come in, before they start construction, we'll have that information on file.
Okay.
So, but otherwise, the applicant, they addressed all of my concerns and my letters and Graves' concerns, so we'll leave it to the board to decide.
Does anyone on the board have any questions?
I have no problem.
Nope.
I don't have any questions, either. This is a public meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard? Seeing none. Before I make, ask for a motion to close the hearing, there was a draft decision that was created. Have you received that?
I don't believe I got it to him. It was pretty standard, though. Joan, it was, I believe you had, there was one request for a waiver to not provide impact reports. I believe we'd spoken about that at a prior meeting.
Yep.
The first condition, superseding order of conditions, be referenced. Simply that building number three is going to be an accessory garage only. Any other use, they have to come back to the board. That's it. The rest of it's pretty standard.
Yep.
Lighting will be downlit to the maximum extent practicable. Yes, the rest of it's pretty standard there.
Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Move to close the hearing.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a draft decision in front of us, as Bernie just mentioned. Can we include the waiver request, whether it's just one of them, Bernie, or do we have to vote on that separately?
Um, you, um, you can probably do it included. I can't, don't see.
Yes, since there's only one waiver.
Yeah, this, and it's, yeah.
All right. Does anyone have any questions about the?
The waiver?
Okay.
Just a note, Mr. Chairman, Tim was not here when this began, I believe, so you can't vote. So you'll just abstain.
Correct.
And the three of you will vote. It's a site plan, so you need three out of five.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I move that we authorize the clerk to execute the decision of the Planning Board regarding site plan approval for 360 Hartford Turnpike, Lake 20 LLC, including the one waiver request.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Our next hearing is a new public hearing for the new building entrance at St. John's School, site plan modification, St. John's Preparatory School of Worcester, location 378 Main Street.
I do have a legal notice, sir.
Please.
Shrewsbury Planning Board, legal notice. The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, November 7, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the select meeting room at the Richard D. Kearney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, to hear the application of St. John's Preparatory School of Worcester, 378 Main Street, Shrewsbury, Mass. 01545, as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section seven, subsection F3, for site plan modification by the Planning Board to allow the construction of a new entrance to an existing building for drop-off of students and associated infrastructure. The proposed development is shown on plans entitled "St. John's Middle School," dated October 16, 2019, prepared by CME Associates Incorporated, 33 Wilbur Crossway, Suite 105, Mansfield, Connecticut, 06268, sent by Peter M. Parent, P.E., in four sheets upon property located southerly of Main Street. The subject premise consists of the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate, 21, Plot 1000000. A copy of the plans may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department in Municipal Office Building.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself.
Steve, and Keith Parent, Chief Manager, CME Associates, representing St. John's. For anyone that might not be familiar, St. John's campus is located on the south side of Main Street, just east of the 290 interchange and just west of the Main Street intersection of Maple Act. So the campus is basically located in the northeast corner of the site, and the main building is Connell Hall, that's probably the oldest building on the site, and that's where the proposed work is supposed to be done. So what the proposal is to do is add a small addition to the backside of the building here, and this addition will act as the entrance to the new middle school facility that the school is looking to incorporate into this existing academic building. In order to facilitate a drop-off area, we're proposing about 130 feet of new sidewalk, and this will also end up narrowing this drive aisle down to 22 feet, and we're incorporating an existing speed bump into a raised crosswalk here to kind of prevent, you know, kind of add some track of calming to the drop-off area. And then, you know, some associated drainage, obviously, we're putting a speed bump all the way across, so we're going to have to put a new catch basin in here to kind of catch some, some water that couldn't make it around. But essentially, in through this area, there's no great changes that are significant, we're just kind of creating sidewalk where there's grass now. And I have a couple of architectural plans that you can show me. This is the, the architectural floor plan for the new addition. This is the addition area here. These classrooms all exist, and they're kind of been mothballed at this point. They were previously used, and then the school built Founder's Hall with some more contemporary classrooms, and these classrooms are currently being underutilized by the high school, so the intent was to kind of use these as a middle school, and it also adds the opportunity because the high school enters from one side of the building, the middle school can enter from the other side, gives them some separation between the T H boys' kids. But this is the, the new exterior work. There'll be some renovations inside to create some administrative space out of one of the classrooms and some faculty office areas out of another one. And then there'll be some interior doors that are added to provide some more separation and that sort of thing. So it's fairly straightforward. If you happen to have any questions to that.
Hello? I'm not opening it up to the public yet, if you don't mind.
Anytime.
Okay. Does anybody from the board wish to have any questions?
My only concern is traffic in the morning.
Yes.
And how are you going to calm traffic?
So the intent is to both offset the school days, so that the middle school will probably start at least 15 minutes after the high school and 15 minutes later than the high school. That may be pushed up to a half an hour, the school's still making that final decision. But currently, so this is a larger scale plan, Main Street here, the western entrance to St. John's is here, the exit's in the middle, and then eastern entrance is here. The intent is for the middle school drop off to enter the eastern entrance, drop off at the new, best of mule, make their way around the building and exit. High school currently enters on the western side, loops around and jumps up to the front of the building.
Okay.
And then for pickups, everybody would enter, and everybody would be picked up at the front of the building.
Okay. I'm fine.
Where on campus exactly are these classrooms?
So this is Connell Hall, and the, the classrooms are in this portion of the building. So.
By the Reiken Center?
Uh, yeah, so Reiken is that here.
Okay.
Let's see, the tennis courts, Jay, right?
Yeah, the tennis courts are here.
Okay. I was going to say, I.
So it's on the other side of the building?
Correct. Okay, I just wasn't sure where, where this actually was.
Yep.
That, that was my only question. To be honest with you, I just didn't know where on campus it actually was. Never really said.
And you went to school there.
Correct. I just didn't know where I, reading through the paperwork and stuff, I never could figure out where exactly it was.
Is that sheet, excuse me, is that sheet included in the new?
It is.
Set of plans that's, so you'll have a new set of plans in your packet for the next round that we just got today, tonight.
Yeah, so I understand that there's some additional plans that is coming.
Yeah, we received some comments from Bernie and from Graves' in the hearing, we addressed those and provided advice on that.
Unfortunately, we haven't obviously had time to review those, so we're planning on continuing this meeting until next, but we can certainly, any other additional questions that come out? Just for curiosity's sake on my end, how many additional students is this middle school expecting to?
They're looking to add between 70 and 80 students the first year as an incoming seventh grade class, and then additional 70 to 80 students the second year.
So seventh and eighth grade?
Yes, seventh and eighth grade. So a total of between, you know, 140 and 160 new students.
Okay, and, and I know that you're planning on adjusting the start times, finish times to try to accommodate the extra traffic flow. Me want to suggest in the 30 minutes is probably a better place to start, because you may find that that may not even be enough.
Right.
I happen to agree.
Pete, are those arrows I'm seeing on there from here? Sorry, my eyes are not that great.
Yeah, so they're, they're color-coded arrows that are kind of denote, high school drop off and pickup, middle school drop off and middle school pickup.
Can you just show the board, too? It was a concern I had in a letter, and I think Graves, too, is where the doors are on the close-up plan?
Sure. So there's an existing door here, actually here where there's steps would be inside, and that door is now going to be here, on this side of the building. Will be here in the site plan view.
I'm fine.
Okay. Take a question.
Yeah, I just, so just, when the students come in in the morning, they're going to be coming in that eastern entrance for drop off?
Right, so the, the students that are dropped off to the middle school will be coming in the eastern entrance.
So my only concern is with the road construction that took place there. They added a left-turn lane into the western entrance of the property, but there isn't one at the eastern, and with the new sidewalk there, when someone's waiting to turn left, no traffic can go by there. So I'm just wondering if there's a way that they could think about that, because obviously the western entrance doesn't prevent people from passing on Main Street. So if, you know, there's 150 students at some point being dropped off, it would strike me that coming in that eastern entrance could become a problem for people who are headed out of town.
We don't want to knock them over.
Right.
That's a good point. I'll look into that myself.
And if you see there, where, where the, you turn left into that entrance, if somebody's there, there's no longer room to pass them on the right.
Nope.
So it's something for you to digest as well?
Thank you.
Okay, nice, nice point. Any other questions from the board at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so, sir, if you have any questions?
Part of my.
Can you introduce yourself?
Has been addressed, Fornia, Charles M., Main Street, 401. I'll write a novel about some of this, maybe when it's all over and we finish with the construction, but part of what I wanted to address has been addressed. I don't know what the answer is, but at, at least it's hit the floor. Is it correct to say that there are no adjustments to the street, Main Street, in all of these plans?
Absolutely not. We wouldn't be even considered allowed to touch the street at this point.
Well, that's. One of my requests a little while ago did take place, I'm happy to share it with you. About 49 years ago, I suggested stop signs. They're there now. Someone, somewhere thought it was an okay idea, evidently. Person probably wasn't born then, had to wait a while, but that's where we are. Is there anything that you anticipate that property owners in the area should be made aware of?
No, Mr. Fornia is, you know, as we've kind of discussed before, there would be traffic on Main Street with the student being dropped off and picked up, but compared to what's already there, it's not a substantial increase. Obviously, Main Street's already a very busy road.
I wish police could give it more time, but at, at times they do, and it does help. But I wish it was all the time. There have been some situations, but not nearly as bad as one might have anticipated through the eons of that situation. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from the audience? You look to be by yourself out there, so I'm guessing there's not.
I'm sorry.
I said you look to be, be yourself out there, so I'm guessing there's no more questions, but I do have to ask, so. There being none, I will take a motion to continue the hearing.
Move to continue the hearing.
Actually, we should be a little more descriptive on that. Jake, could you?
Yeah. December 5. Move that we continue the public hearing for the new building entrance at St. John's High School, site plan modification, St. John's Preparatory School of Worcester, to the December 5, 2019, meeting at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing you again next month.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing is a public hearing for the Edgemere Crossing at Flint Pond, site plan special permit, location 180200228 Hartford Turnpike. I believe you have a plus three continuance.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. We received a request for continuance for, till the next meeting, from the applicant for Edgemere Crossing.
Does anybody have a problem with the request for a continuance?
Nope.
Sir.
Do I have a motion?
Move that we continue the public hearing for Edgemere Crossing at Flint Pond, site plan special permit, location 180200228 Hartford Turnpike, to the December 5, 2019, meeting at 7:00 PM.
Is there any special thing we're going to talk about?
We are, good question, Mal, that we are no longer doing, the board's no longer doing specific topics at this point. We are now waiting for the revisions based on the comments from the board.
Okay.
That's what hasn't come in yet, so that's why we're not, I think, believe that's why they request the continuance.
Okay.
So, all right.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. You're now up to new business, Mr. Cahill.
Right, so the first order of new business is to discuss and vote to release the bond for 67 through, sorry, 69, I'm typo on that one. The bond release has it correct. 69 through 73 Harrington Avenue, to release the bond in its entirety. It's, they've submitted their ASBills, it's been checked and cleared by planning and engineering, and seems to be correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the release of the bond for 60, you said 69?
69.
Yeah, that's a typo, sorry about that.
69 to 73 Harrington Avenue.
I move that we release the bond for 69 to 73 Harrington Avenue.
Is, there any, there's no value on that, is there?
Uh, it's the entire amount, so.
In its entirety.
In its entirety, yeah.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We do that because sometimes there's partial releases, so there isn't, it all goes back. The second order of new business is another bond release, discuss and vote to release the bond for 15 Fortune Boulevard, and that is not a typo, that is correct, that was the Columbia Gas, so to release the bond in its entirety.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we release the bond for 15 Fortune Boulevard in its entirety.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, you were discussing the 2020 calendar, I'm going to go turn this on.
Okay, so the next item, while Bernie is getting that, everyone should have seen a schedule for next year's planning date meetings. Okay, so the next item, while Bernie's getting that, everyone should have seen a schedule for next year's planning date meetings. Other than Tim noting that January second was going to be a difficulty, does anybody foresee anything based on the current schedule?
I can't plan that far ahead.
Everything looks okay to me as now, sir.
Very good, I think so as well, so. I don't think we have to do anything with this, other than just understand that the schedule is made, and that we try to be here as best we can. Okay? And the next one, as Bernie's getting started, will be a town center rezoning presentation. And as soon as Bernie's ready, we'll go. There it is.
That's weird.
I can't see it.
Oh.
I can see one shadow.
It's on the touchscreen. Hold on a second. There it is. Wow. All right, hold on, bear with me just a second.
I don't.
You do?
No, I do not.
It's Castle Muschweinstein.
And how would you know that?
Because I've been there. That was actually the castle that Walt Disney mirrored.
Bernie, I have no idea how to run that.
Well, I won't ask you to.
It's in Germany.
Should talk about the places you haven't been.
Yeah, it's actually working.
Right.
All right, I will sit up here if you'll indulge me, I think it's just going to be easier to talk. So I don't know how many of you saw the presentation of the Board of Selectmen, this is a variation of that same presentation. So I think as many of you know, the Town Planning Department is currently undertaking an effort to rezone the town center into a town center zoning district. During the past three years, there have been several reports recommending changes to the town center zoning, and to improvements overall. You see here the Shrewsbury Master Plan, kind of kicked it off in two thousand and sixteen, that was when it was completed, the master plan, it was actually begun in like two thousand and fourteen, late two thousand and fourteen. The authors of the master plan actually said, and I'll quote for you, that one of the tasks the town was to have was to promote the town center as a pedestrian-friendly shopping and service area, and a neighborhood gathering place, to protect the remaining traditional features of the town center, and to ensure that future infill is complementary to the compact style of the area. Since the completion of the master plan, you can see we've undertaken a few other studies and plans, I think you're all familiar with them. There was the parking study of two thousand and eighteen, there was the Beale Reuse Committee, came up with their recommendations this past summer. The Town Center Study, which I know all of you partook in, I don't know if Tim knew about it, but there was a Town Center Visioning Study that was completed, and the final report was this past May, two thousand and nineteen. We currently have a wayfinding and branding study ongoing right now, and what you probably don't know is a few undergraduates at WPI are doing their senior year report on some intersections in town. So what all these all have- What's that?
Excuse me, in the center or throughout town?
In the center of town, based on some of these reports, so. Some very industrious young students, we're going to get their report eventually. But what all these reports have in common is that all of them are recommending that something change in the town center, that something make it more vibrant, more alive, more user-friendly, right? Specifically in the Shrewsbury Town Center Study, we had a lot of feedback, and the consensus was pretty much around what you might think it would be, you know, improvements to the streetscape, to sidewalks, lighting, trees. Other people reported that, and I should probably change that to here. So this was the general feedback we got from the surveys we did last year, you might remember, we sent out postcards about those surveys, and we had well over three hundred, we had close to three seventy, three eighty respondents, which was phenomenal for a town survey of this type. And these were the kind of the general feedback, the consensus if you will, that we got from these responses. Things about changes to local zoning, to lower barriers, make more viable opportunities for redevelopment and infill, they call it in town, create more and safer pedestrian infrastructure, and introduce design elements to keep it aesthetically pleasing in town as infill moves along. So that is the feedback we got from the Town Center Visioning Study from the general public in Shrewsbury. Now, for most of you who are familiar with what we call the Town Center, which is essentially today Maple Street, parts of one forty north and south, and Main Street. It doesn't exactly look the way people are envisioning it right now, that they would like to see it. And these two pictures are just examples, I'm not picking anyone out in particular, that's not the purpose of this exercise. But as you can see here in both of these pictures, there's an abundance of concrete in the town center, there is an abundance of curb cuts, probably an overabundance of curb cuts. The pedestrian access is often very disjointed. Sometimes there's any at all. On the left-hand side, it's, you can't even tell where the parking ends and where the street begins, it kind of just flows. If you ever, I've walked across this once in a while, and I'm heading up there to grab a coffee or something, and I'm looking around like an owl three sixty to make sure nothing's coming at me. So I'm quite familiar with it. And there's also kind of a disconnect, you can see how far back the buildings are set. That's a real disconnect in architectural terms between the private realm and the public realm, it's, the front face of the building is so far set back, there's no interaction as you walk, right, between you, there's no experience. But there are some really good examples in town, it's not without, it's good examples of what we might call village architecture or village design. On the left-hand side, you see some very traditional New England architecture and architectural features. I think we're all familiar with this building in the town center. And on the right-hand side, that's the Amici's Building, I call it the Amici's Building, I know it's not its official name. But these examples, especially the one on the right, give you a sense of physically what it is, I think, that people are looking and striving for when they say in these responses, these kinds of studies and visioning and stuff, what it is that they're, the look and feel that they're going for. So. So once these visions, after the vision had kind of been established, the next logical step was to take that vision and distill it into some clear goals that we could actually get our hands on. It's one thing to say, I want something to be nicer, and another to say, well, let's start, try to get this into something that we can get our hands around and our heads around, and start thinking about it. So the Planning Department sat down and said, well, let's take these visions, these responses to this visioning study, and what can we get out of it? What kind of goals can we establish that are clear and concrete? So one is that, what's clear is that there's definitely a yearning to establish some kind of, the town center is a vibrant pedestrian environment that works both day and night, and that doesn't mean twenty-four hours at night, it means some nightlife, right, into the evening, let's say, more than what's there now. Talking to developers and owners and people who live in and around town, especially in the town center, there was really kind of a longing to see some kind of unified zoning district, something that was more unique to the center area. Right now, most of the center's under limited business district, and you'll see that later in a picture, but it doesn't really reflect what you'd consider a traditional town, New England town-village style of zoning, right, what you're getting there. The other thing is to create opportunities for development of more robust cultural, as well as economic center. This is something we heard, and I've heard from members of the Town Center Association, is that whatever infill does come into the center, to be quote-unquote vibrant, and I actually agree with these comments, it needs to be not just economically viable, but culturally viable, to bring in nonprofits, public, the, all, all sectors of society, if you will, and the community, so it's not just an over, it's not just a shopping center, in other words, it's a mix of uses. So that was, that was heard loud and clear. And the other was, which I think most everyone had kind of agreed on, was the aesthetic character of a traditional New England town-village, or center. So we have our vision, and now we have our goals, so the question after that for us was, well, how are we going to make that into reality, right, how are we, what are we going to do with these two goals? And for the town, one of the best tools that we have in our toolbox to craft and shape the future of the town center is, of course, zoning. All right, and that's where planning comes in, and that's kind of my expertise and the expertise of the Planning Department, so that's where we turn our focus and our efforts. Lucky for us, in that same Town Center zoning, uh, visioning, excuse me, report, came out some recommendations to guide us in our quest for zoning, new zoning, right, and one of, these are the recommendations that came out of that visioning report. Town Center Zoning District, establish that, design standards to look at, and this was again quite general, spaces between the building's facade, the front-facing, the public-facing part of a building, and the public realm, the sidewalk, like what does that kind of look like between the street and the building, right, so think about that. To go over parking requirements, to review them, see if we couldn't find something more flexible was one recommendation. To look at establishing design standards for lighting and signage. And again, this was, again, this was quite broad under the recommendations, but to create certainty and predictability for developers, which we understood from the consultant writing this, to mean a much more or clearer version of zoning for this area in town, so that there's predictability. If you're a developer, you know what to expect, if you're a resident or a business in town, you know what to expect, it's much clearer. And then allow for a variety of human-scale uses, which is very professional lingo in the planning and architectural world for saying things that are of a scale and a mass and a bulk, and uses that meet what, for you and I walking by, would be very much, we would feel comfortable in that area, we're not talking high-rises, but we're not talking seas of parking lot either, we're talking about something nice in the middle. So that, we took those. Right, let me change this. So taking those recommendations, the Shrewsbury undertook the following zoning review for the town center, and this is where we are today, and this is what we've been working on. While the zoning isn't entirely complete, it is in draft form, and we are working on it, right? And what's part of that right now is the reevaluation of existing uses and considering new ones. So now we're really getting into the nuts and bolts of the zoning, right? So these are our, kind of our six areas that we're focused on, the larger concepts we're focusing on. So reevaluating of existing uses and considering new uses, drafting new parking standards and requirements, three proposing new minimum lot sizes and setbacks, introducing requirements for pedestrian and cyclist accommodations, formulating design standards and guidelines, and considering the boundaries of a new town zoning district. So that's when we took those broad recommendations, and we brought them down to actionable items, these are the six action items that we've come up with, and that we are starting to flesh out now. So I'm just going to quickly go through a few of them, we have some examples here, which is very exciting. It's the stuff everyone likes, the pictures. So the first one was the reevaluation of uses, so the Planning Department, we are considering right now, and have written one or two of these already out, was to put forth uses such as outdoor dining by right, so no longer by a special permit by anyone, you could do it by right, provided there's the area. And I think, if I hadn't said it before, I think what you'll notice as we go through these is the overlap. So many of these overlap, you'll see later, or the next slide even, when we talk about wider sidewalks, you can't really do the outdoor dining without that wide sidewalk. And I know Amici's run into problems, if you want a real-life example, where that sidewalk's just a little too narrow to get chairs out there and dining, it's just, it's not really, you're going to block that way. So what you see here is, on the left, you see that outdoor dining as a use, and that probably will be a proposed use, and on the right-hand side, you see upper-story, you can call it upper-story mixed use, some people call it up-zoning, some people call it top-of-shop uses, we're calling it, we're going to probably call it top-of-shop uses, but upper-story mixed use you can also call it. So that is where you have typically retail underneath, and then you have offices and/or residential, or a mix of both above it, which again, as you'll notice, overlaps with height, of course. So the next one is parking standards and requirements. So requiring rear-building parking, I think that would almost go without saying, if we start to change the front setbacks, which you'll see on the next page. Providing for shared parking arrangements, that's not something we have right now, and I know as we struggle with parking in town, and from the MDI report in parking, there is parking in the town center, but it's very, almost haphazard, and it's not being used very efficiently. So we're hoping to introduce ways where private owners can communicate with each other and learn to and accept the idea of shared parking, especially for uses that don't overlap in terms of time of day of their use, their highest use, right? So you might have a restaurant that gets use at night, but you might have, I don't know, a kid's playplace during the daytime, right, that shuts down around three or four, and then the restaurant takes over from there, so, things of that nature. But you can see on the left-hand side, that's not Shrewsbury, but it is a town in Massachusetts that has the rear parking in the back. That's shared use as well in that building, it's multiple different retail and restaurant facilities. And on the right, Chiampa Funeral Home actually already has their parking in the back. And you can imagine how perhaps less attractive that building would be were that parking to be where it's the park in front, or the, I guess it's a yard, it's, I call it a park, it looks like a park, it's so big. But, you know, that's what makes that building so beautiful, is it has that there in front. And when we talk about space in front, again, it overlaps, right, that's what they've done with the space in front of their building. So, moving right along. I printed a bunch of blank pages. All right, so, minimum lot size is a maximum setback, so right now the setback, I can't remember it offhand, but it is something like twenty feet off the front's lot line. But as you can see here on the left, that's Amici's again, this one has zero setbacks for the Amici's building, it's right on the sidewalk. And that's what we'll be looking to implement that, although we might consider, and we're talking about this now, why we're soliciting feedback, is to have a minimum actually of five feet, and perhaps a maximum of like ten. So that five feet is, you would essentially be able to use it to combine it with what's existing there now, and add on to it. So you'd get five what's existing, plus another five, you now have a ten-foot wide sidewalk in front of you. So that's something we're considering. On the right is Woodstock, Vermont, I happened to be there recently for the first time, it was very nice. I took that picture, and you can see here, the variation in building sizes is because each of those stands on its own lot, but the lots vary in size. You get a very interesting mix of narrower buildings, wider buildings. It's a uniqueness, and it adds to the character of it, you don't get that monotonous, every lot's, you know, fifty feet across, this X-high. It's all, it's all different, and it's slightly varied, and you can see that. And also in this one, as we said, the crossover, I'm going to keep telling you about it, this one has top-of-shop housing on this, and top-of-shop uses in each of these buildings on the right, and I think if you look at any books about New England, Woodstock keeps cropping up, it's a very typical New England village center. So, as I'd mentioned previously, on the left-hand side, you can see the effect of what a wide sidewalk does, it offers safety for pedestrians. It offers an opportunity to perhaps provide outdoor dining, and you can see on the right-hand side, obviously, bicycle parking, but, which, of course, if you had a sidewalk that wide, you could provide some of that against the street perhaps. Moving right along, pedestrian accommodations would be a requirement as well. Again, I happened to be in Woodstock a few weeks ago, on the left-hand side, it's a little bright, but right underneath that open blue sign, you can actually see there's some, a colored crosswalk, much like the one on the right-hand side, that's actually going across an alleyway drive between two buildings into some rear parking. But it helps, as someone comes out or goes in, they're going to notice that colored pavement right there, and they'll be aware that pedestrians could be crossing. And on the right-hand side, they didn't paint it so much as used red brick to continue the red pavement stones to cross that sidewalk, or I should say driveway. So those would be considered as requirements as well. And then we have, of course, design standards and guidelines. And here again, we are soliciting public feedback, and your feedback, about specifically how we want to do this. Standards should be understood as things that are required, whereas guidelines are things that are a preference that the town has, but it's not necessarily required. And there are several ways we can do this. And there are several ways we can do this, and that we're looking at to do it. One would be to list elements of a certain design and say you've gotta choose like X number of these, or else you're gonna have to come in for, you know, a variance or a special permit to tell us why you can't include something like an awning or a setback door or wide windows as a retail facility. And these are the kind, you can see here, upper façade, storefronts. So it's very, it's very detail, design-oriented. On the right-hand side, you can see design of a different sense, and that's design for signs. Signs often get overlooked and underappreciated, but the difference between a large can sign that's plastic and lit internally, that works for high-speed highways where you're going 55 miles per hour and they need you to catch your eye as you drive by really fast. For pedestrian scale and kind of village scale planning, you really want it to be towards those slower cars, towards pedestrians especially, so that experience of walking through and seeing it, it's different, right? It's speaking to you as someone walking by, rather than at a higher speed on a highway. So on the right-hand side, you can see that. I don't know if you can see the one, the one in the back. You can actually see the little light. Actually, on the right of the word twist, there's a little circle. That's actually a light shining on it. It's not internally illuminated. It's externally illuminated. So there would be standards for both for architecture and for things like signage and lighting. And finally, that brings us to, where's this town zoning district? What are the boundaries gonna be for this? So we are considering, currently, the area we're really focusing our effort on is the middle orange area, which is today the limited business district in the town center. Residents B2 is that yellow area. And then you can see all the different kinds. There's a lot of different zoning going on right here in this area. The red outline you can see is, if you remember from the parking study I mentioned, that's the area we classified as the quote-unquote town center for the sake of this study, so we had a, a study area to focus on. So a question we have, this is, none of this, that red line, by the way, is not set in stone in any ways. The zoning there, at the moment, is, for the moment, set in stone. But the question is, is when we come up with these, and, and finally come out with these zoning bylaws, where do we want that town center to be? Or do we want two town centers? If you come to the public forum on November 19th at 6 o'clock at the library, we will have some examples of other towns that do concentric circle zoning, so they do, they have like a core, and then they have another kind of row around it. So you'd have a center business district kind of, or mixed-use district, and then around it you'd have a center zone residential. So it might have, allow smaller lots in other parts in town, but it might also have stringent, more stringent standards for things like design, right? So you're not getting these large, really wide duplexes. You're getting something that really, you know, evokes a village center still. But of course, we wouldn't be allowing like, you know, commercial resident, retail in these residential zones. So, that brings us to some key questions moving forward. And these are questions that I posed to the Board of Selectmen, and I'm posing to you and anyone who wants to come to our public forums. Based on the results of the studies that have gone before us and what you've heard tonight, do you think these, you know, goals and objectives for the town center are still valid and relevant? Where do you see the town center zone districts to be? How do you feel about taller buildings and mixed uses along Maple Avenue, Main Street, and maybe other parts? And are there any different uses you'd like to see in the town center, or uses you definitely don't wanna see in the town center? So those are questions I'm throwing out there. I did wanna, I always mention this because it's a note of caution, which is what can zoning do and what it can't do. And I know you're the planning board, so this is maybe more for people watching at home, but I think you know this already, right? Zoning doesn't make things happen. We're not the developers. The town's not the developers. The planning board is not the developers, or the ZBA, right? We set the guidelines. We set the rules, you know, like any sports game. We make the rules, but we don't play the game, right? We're gonna set the parameters for what can and cannot be built in town. And over time, organically, our vision will become a reality as ownership changes hands, as a developer buys a new property, and they see these opportunities and they decide to take them. No one who's there now in the town center, and I, I always stress this as well, none of the businesses at the moment, or even if we pass it, would need to change what they're doing at all, right? They would be perfectly allowed to continue going on as they have always done. We can't make anyone do something in that sense. We can encourage it. We can provide the opportunities, and we can reduce the barriers. And then we will go out and, you know, the best we can, be boosters for Shrewsbury and advertise that this new zoning is available, and then hopefully people take advantage of it. So, lastly, before I got any questions, as I mentioned, for everyone at home and here, on November 19th and December 11th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, we're doing an open-house public forum, so you do not have to come for two hours. You can stop in between basketball practices, or dinner, or what have you. Wherever you're driving your kids or yourself that night, stop in for five or 10 minutes. We'd love to get your feedback. At 7:00, and maybe at 6:15, I'll be doing a presentation, not quite as lengthy as this one, but I'll be doing another one. And everyone's welcome. It's walk-in. Stay as long as you can.
Where is the location?
At the library. Thank you. Yes, library. 6:00 to 8:00, November 9th, December 11th.
Second floor?
As you walk in, the regular first floor. Rooms A and B, so we'll probably just room A.
You go into the right?
Yep, so go in. You'll see it. We're gonna have signs up. It's advertised on the internet on the webpage. And then this is the rest of us moving forward. We would come back to this board in the spring, or late winter, to do our regular public hearings for zoning to get through. So there would be, this is the beginning of the process, so this would still have to go through review by this board, so. Yeah, and that is it. And I think you guys know where to find me, in case someone else needs to. So you have any questions? You can have questions. If you don't, you can always bring them up later. But now's the time to ask any general questions you have or comments.
I think you, you've, you've kind of touched upon it at the last couple of slides. My, my first question was, what, how is that gonna impact current businesses that are, you know, as things are changing around them? And you, you answered that for me, so that's good. I think that you're right, though. As things start changing, people will likely lean towards where those, those benefits are for, certainly on the signages and things of that nature.
Right.
So I, I'm encouraged by that. I, I am, I am planning on going to the, the November 19th meeting to interface with some of the public to kind of rub ideas. I don't have any-
Can you drop us a note for any, so I remember?
Yes, I will send you all a reminder. We'll be sending reminders around town, too.
Okay.
It's about a week and a half away.
So, it's good. I mean, I, I was part of the master plan committee, so I'm very familiar with what- some of the things that were, you know, brought up at the master plan, specific to the town center. So this is go, this is all good stuff.
Good.
Anybody else have any questions?
Excellent presentation.
It's a great job.
Thank you. We'll bury it up for the forum, so everyone's not seeing the same picture.
Looks like a lot of work has gone into that, so.
Thank you, yes. Please, comments gonna be very, it will be very interactive. We're gonna have a lot of visuals there. We're gonna be explaining more in greater detail, and everyone's gonna have a chance to drop off opinions and do some sticker voting and all those fun things, so. Yeah, so please come by.
Will do.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, well, at this point, I think we're at the end of our agenda, so do I have a motion to-
How many of your property owners are in?
Do we have to go over that?
Okay. Okay.
Do I have a motion to close this-
Move to close the public hearings.
Yeah, our meeting, but, yep. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. That's the one I was looking for. Thank you.
8 o'clock on the news.